I guess you have to use the hammer a little harder than normal. Okay. Everybody, thank you for coming this evening. This is a special meeting of the Board of Ed on February 9th.
I can't hear you, Vito.
What's with the sound, guys? You give me the thumbs up. Okay, we got it now? Good. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Welcome, everybody, to tonight's -- this is a special meeting of the Board of Ed on February 9th. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for everybody coming this evening. One of our board members is running a little late, but we do have seven of us here at this point. We had a regularly scheduled meeting for next Tuesday, and with everything that's changing in the environment over the last week or so, we wanted to have this special meeting because we're going to be discussing a potential resolution that we're going to vote on. And we will be having those discussions tonight with a possible vote on that resolution. I think there are copies available. They are on our website. They've been out there since yesterday. So if you haven't read it and you want to read it, there's copies floating around right now in the audience. So the first thing we're going to do is I need to make an announcement that we have a hard stop for this meeting at 7:30 this evening. So what we're going to do, the format's going to be, the first thing is we have to appoint the district clerk for the evening. And then what we're going to do is we're going to go to comments from the public, which our board policy normally is that comments from the public is limited to 30 minutes. We rarely enforce that, but tonight we're going to enforce it so that we ensure we have enough time to do the discussion of the resolution. And then if we have time after the resolution, we will open it up for more comments based on the availability of time. So I ask that anybody coming up, please be short when they come up to address the board. And I also just want to remind people that it's -- this is a public meeting held, a board meeting held in public, so it's not a back and forth between the speaker and the board. You will listen to your comments and we'll take them under consideration. So the first order of business, would someone like to move to appoint a district clerk? Yes, no? Jackie, second. Okay, and it's going to be Dr. Glass. Okay? Kristi, you're second. All in favor? Everybody? Fine, we're all set. So now at this point, I'll open it up to comments from the public. People signing up, thank you very much. Please identify your name and your affiliation with the district. And like I said, we're going to try to keep it to 30 minutes because we do have an absolute hard stop. So, first person?
Vito. Can I make sure there's any students? There you go.
I'm sorry?
Any students?
That's a good point. If there's any students that are going to comment on a resolution, why don't you please come up first? We'll give you priority. Good point. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. So raise a hand. Who wants to come up? Who signed up first? No comments. We could go right into our discussion.
I'll go first.
And please, please keep it quiet while people are speaking, and we're going to keep it respectful. All right. Someone, please help them with the mic. Make sure we can hear them, okay? Lower the mic.
I'm pretty certain you take yours off when you speak. Say hello.
Hello.
We can hear you.
Nice and clear.
Hello, my name is Kylie Hendry, and I'm in 4th grade at Greenville School. I'm hoping that we can get rid of masks and social distancing soon. It was so much better when I got to go to school without a mask for one day. I couldn't even remember what it was like to see my friends' faces at school. Why was it only one day? Every day I have to see my -- I have to wear my mask at school. It's so hard to breathe, and sometimes I feel nauseous and my head hurts if I wear it for too long, especially at PE. It's really hard to hear anyone, and sometimes I get worried that I don't hear everything my teacher says. I haven't seen my friends or teachers smile in school for two years. All I see is everyone's eyes, and I can't tell if someone's happy or sad. I miss talking and laughing with my friends and seeing their faces at school, especially at lunch. I can't even sit next to my friends at lunchtime. I miss my mom and my dad and visiting me at school. Sometimes they would come in for holidays, parties, and, I mean, or help with fun activities. Now no one is allowed near each other, so we don't get to do as much fun activities. I miss everyone going in the gym for special events. I miss my 2nd grade spring show, and I never got to play the recorder in 3rd grade. I can't even remember the last time I went on a field trip. I really hope I will have my 5th grade trip next year and my moving up ceremony because my brother missed all of that, and I don't want to miss it too. When will, when will school go back to normal? I hope it's soon.
That was a great job, and to answer your question, we hope so too.
Hi. My name is Janet Harrison. I live at 90 Park Drive. So let's be first clear on this, that the governor today said the mask mandate is in place for schools, at least until the end of February for beginning of March. The board's participation or effect on this has no bearing. And so let's be clear with that, because there's this idea that the last board members ran on, unmask our kids, just like the previous board. You have no impact on that. This is a state decision at this point. So, you know, there is -- excuse me, I am speaking.
Please let her speak.
And you will not interrupt me, or I will interrupt you.
Don't raise your voice, please, but I will manage the crowd. Please let her speak.
Please do. So the idea that this board can impact anything is actually not true. Okay? And the first thing, a part of this resolution speaks to outdoor masking. Well, outdoor masking, we haven't been outdoor masking since the beginning of the year. Nobody, no kid's wearing their mask outdoors. So I'm not sure why this is part of this resolution. So, and listen, and based on last night's virtual meeting, there were lots of misinformation out there about COVID masks. Masks do work. While N95s, while N95s are the best, unless they're fitted, are not 100%. But cloth masks are barely better than wearing nothing. But KN95s, like the one, you know what? Are you going to stop them or not?
If anyone interrupts the speaker, I will ask to have you removed. This is going to be a respectful meeting on all sides of the subject, okay? I will have you removed. Let the woman speak.
But N95s, like the one I am wearing, are effective. The only difference between this one, which is KN95, and an N95 is that this one was manufactured in China. They are 95% protective against the rate of, for prevention. To say they are not is a lie, and to deny the research that shows differently is also a lie. Working in healthcare doesn't give you the right to ignore science. And no, Fauci has not recently said they were ineffective. That's a lie. Masks are all mostly effective when everyone wears them while indoors. They work in preventing someone with COVID from spreading it and helping to prevent those who don't have it by wearing a mask to not get it. Again, science, not some claptrap from Joe Rogan. This board has no say as to whether there is a vaccine mandate. To run on it or to suggest they do, again, is false. And by the way, our kids have, oh, I already said that. So I want you to know that there are many parents, yeah, you know what? You interrupted me. No, I was interrupted twice, so I am going to finish.
I don't need you to tell me how to run the meeting. In the back, if you, another outburst, I will have you individually removed. Please, let the woman speak. Janet, I'll give you another 20 seconds to wrap up, please.
So eventually, obviously, the masks will go away, and there's still going to be parents who want their kids to be masked. And I want to know, and this is a question, and I know you're not going to answer it here, that my kids or anybody else's kids that want to continue to wear a mask and social distance will be accommodated in the cafeteria situation, which is one of the big things that just happened. So, you know, the reality is that so much of what's going on right now is not based in fact and scientific truth. And so that is concerning to me. I'm wrapping up, Vito. I appreciate you, and I appreciate you monitoring this, what is a very difficult situation. But I will say that the lying about the statistics and the facts needs to stop.
Okay, thank you. Next, please. And please let whoever's speaking say their piece.
Hi, my name's Michelle Forzaglia. I live at 115 Park Avenue. And, you know, I like to hear all opinions on the matter, so I would really appreciate if everyone would stop yelling so I could hear everybody's opinion. I think that as a community, when we're dealing with difficult situations, we need to listen to each other. It's the same thing we're talking about when we raise our kids. So I had COVID-19 in 2020, and I'm a teacher, and I have first graders. And I was in the classroom for two hours. I didn't know I had it. And it is because of the masks and social distancing that my students were not infected. And there are long-term effects. I still don't have my sense of taste and smell, and I hope that never happens to any of our kids, because I think as an adult, I'll deal, but I don't want my children to feel that way. We're all tired of masks. I do not like teaching in a mask. We're all tired of social distancing. I have to put tape on the floor. I have to make sure the kids are separate. I provide mask breaks. We haven't, we have to decide. We have to decide if we're going to say, you're missing everything, you're losing out, or if we're going to say, we're protecting each other, we're trying to keep each other safe. I think we are getting towards the end. I think with vaccines, and I think with our infection rates going down, we're almost there. But I don't think we should jump ahead of the scientists. I don't think we should jump ahead of the doctors. I think we need to be reasonable, and I think we need to be respectful, because some people still may wear their masks. I just ask that you listen to the facts. I ask that you respect each other, and I ask that we can come out of this as a community and not divide it. So I think we have to remember that when people are speaking. I think that's really all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. It's not called for.
Hi, good evening.
Ask the officer to do it.
So my, I think most of you know me. My name is Dr. Cardinal Smith.
Move closer, Cardi.
Sure, can you hear me?
Perfect.
Oh, sorry, I'm a giant. Thank you, is that better?
That's better, yeah.
So I'm Dr. Cardinal Smith, and earlier today, I sent a letter to the board. Thank you, Dr. Glass, for your response. On behalf of many of the healthcare professionals in this community, including many physicians, with some suggestions and recommendations on how to move forward with relaxing COVID protocols in a way that is data-driven and metric-based. And as I look here at the resolution, and as I think back to how Dr. Glass introduced the Zoom yesterday, it was in the spirit of collaboration and in the spirit of compromise. What I'm not really seeing here is the compromise part. So if I look at the resolution, it says, one is to relax restrictions on district visitors and events. I'm not entirely sure what that means. Is this that parents are allowed to go into their elementary school Waverly classroom again to celebrate their birthdays with their children? What are the requirements for those parents to do so? I don't know how these things will be enacted, and, you know, Dr. Collins, our, the medical director for our district, wasn't really given the opportunity to elaborate on that. And so it's not clear to me how the board, who are not healthcare experts, are making some of these decisions. And I would love to be able to have--
Do you, do you really want me to have you removed from the meeting? All right? All right. Meeting is recessed. Until you people can sit down and be quiet, the next outburst, I'm going to ask the officer to remove you. This time is coming off of the public comment time. You'll get your time. I don't know if that's allowed. I don't know if you could stop it. I don't know if it's allowed. Is the bottom clock running? Good, because they're only getting 30 minutes. Okay. All right, are we ready to start again? Can everybody be respectful? Okay, Cardi, go ahead. We'll start the clock again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, but please not again. It's coming off public comments time.
Okay. So I would like to have some guidelines from our district's medical director and expert on how to do these things safely. I'm not asking that we not do them. I'm asking, how do we do that in a way that mitigates risk and protects all of our children, regardless of what your beliefs are about how quickly the protocol relaxation should occur, or your beliefs about whether masks should be worn? Similarly, relaxing lunch restrictions and allowing all students to eat lunch under normal conditions. What will that look like for each school? What does that look like at the high school level, at the middle school level, at the elementary school level? I know there's a difference in beliefs about vaccines, but if we look at what those mitigation risks are, we know that in Westchester County, the age group of 12 to 17, 84% of them are vaccinated. That's amazing. In the 5 to 11-year-old group, only 44% are vaccinated. We cannot take the same approach with those that are 12 to 17 as we take with those who are 5 to 11. So what I would ask is, as we are thinking about relaxing these protocols, which we all agree should occur, I ask that we do it in a data and metric-driven way that is safe, mitigates risks, and uses the experts that our district has at hand to help make those decisions. And those of us in the medical community, who are also parents in this community, would be more than happy to help with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Nina McAdoo, 44 Interlakeen Drive. Can you hear me?
Please.
Hi. So I attended the Zoom meeting last night, and I couldn't help myself. I'm a lawyer, so I did review the draft board resolution as well. I shared most of these thoughts with Dr. Glass via email today, but I wanted to share them with the board as well. On the resolution itself, most of the wording seemed reasonable, but there is one phrasing that jumped out, and that was the part that talks about the district following, quote, "legally enforceable laws." To me, that's not normal phrasing that a lawyer would write. It should be "all applicable laws," which is what the school is obliged to comply with. As we often say in my job, where my team and I give a lot of compliance advice, we always say, we still have to comply with laws we disagree with, unless and until they're struck down. I'm sure a lot of people in this audience are rooting for that to happen. But we don't get to make our own judgments about enforceability before that happens. So I'd suggest that language be changed, perhaps. Also, I may have missed this, but I didn't see a reference to the district following any particular guidelines, such as CDC or Westchester County Department of Health, which to me should be referred to, because I understand from last night's meeting that the district's council actually advised them, the district, that you should follow applicable guidelines. They shouldn't all be summarily disregarded just because they're no longer required. There was a lot of emotion, different reactions to COVID, which none of us in this room caused. I'd like to point out, however, that these harms are not just because of masking. Kids have lost parents and grandparents to COVID right here in Eastchester. We can't forget that. We do need to consider our differently situated neighbors, like several who eloquently spoke last night about not having the option to be vaccinated, being immunocompromised, living with someone who's immunocompromised. We have other neighbors who are very concerned about freedom. We hear that a lot. What I would say to them is that freedom is not anarchy. Freedom is also not disregard of due care. That's recklessness. And my family and I ask that the district not be reckless in what it considers doing as we go forward. So while outdoor unmasking seems eminently reasonable, and getting children off of floors to eat lunch certainly is too, I would ask that district proceed carefully and thoughtfully with respect to other measures to keep our schools safe and positive learning environments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Lori De La Para, 28 Claude Atway. First, let me start by saying that everyone in this room deeply cares about children. This we know for certain. And we are all tired of COVID. Kids, parents, teachers, administrators, board members, everyone. Nobody wants to wear these damn masks one minute longer than necessary. No parent wants to psychologically harm their child by masking. To say otherwise is cruel. But I am also certain that no one wants their child to be sick. It's time to remove the masks, but it does not come without risk. We need an off-ramp plan. Both of my children had COVID. One was completely asymptomatic. The other was fairly ill for the full 10 days, like a really bad flu. And six weeks later, she is still suffering from extreme fatigue, headaches, and stomach issues. When she's not in school, she sleeps all the time with a bucket by her bed. This is what long haul COVID can do to a child. The school nurse has told me that they are seeing a lot of these lingering effects with students who have had COVID, and I'm not sure that this information has been shared with the Board of Education. I think it's important for you to know how some students are affected after having COVID. Many past speakers have mentioned a 99% recovery rate, and that's definitely a fact. So who cares? I guess it isn't a big deal unless your kid is one of the 1%. Despite my personal experience and my family's experience, I don't disagree that while infection rates are low, it's a good time to make adjustments and relax protocols. Let parents and their children decide whether to mask or not, and what is best for their family. But let's be honest, it isn't as simple as just unmasking. We still have space issues with respect to social distancing. Our buildings didn't get bigger during the pandemic, and without masks and distancing, kids are going to get exposed. So does contact tracing come back? What is a close contact? What are quarantine timeframes? Do they even need to quarantine at all? And if the virus surges again, do we go back to masks? What's the metric for that? That question is really no different than what you requested of the governor in your advocacy letter for mask removal. Hopefully, your advocacy works in both directions. So just as the pandemic had us go from lockdown to remote to hybrid to full-time with masks, you know, by all means, let's get rid of the masks, but let's keep social distance for 14 to 21 days. If there's no uptick, then let's get rid of it. But we have to have a plan. I'm finished. I hope you'll all consider this, because I don't want any other child to suffer for a month and a half the way mine has. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sorry?
How are you? Nick Belly, Hickory Hill Road, Eastchester, New York. I have a 6-year-old in Waverly and a 4-year-old that'll be coming to Waverly next year. All right, so I'm not sure if everyone here has actually read the proposed resolution, but this to me looks like a fake resolution without directly saying that social distancing will be eliminated. We are calling for a full return to normalcy, not just act like things are being changed with vague statements. We want our kids eating together normally, not just given the chance to sit at a table. One problem was fixed, only not, only to start another. Now, if my daughter has a chance to eat in the cafeteria, she has to sit isolated at a table with one other kid. She has to move her desk apart to eat a snack or eat lunch in her classroom as if she's being punished. Back in December, my daughter was devastated as we watched a recording of her singing songs six feet apart from her classmates in a mask for a holiday concert. She did not understand why she had to do this while her 4-year-old brother was able to put on a performance at his preschool with his parents and grandparents attending. She has never gotten to do anything like this, and she knows it. What are we teaching our kids? Thank God my 6-year-old knows none of this is normal. She knows it's not her job to keep others safe from a virus, no matter how many times someone at school might tell her that she should. It's her job to be a kid. Go to school and learn. That's it. My 94-year-old grandmother, who even lost her son to COVID, would never ask of her great-grandchildren to do this. Our parents and grandparents know how to protect themselves. They're strong, and they know there are treatments and choice to be vaccinated. They're all thinking this is disgusting, and they want to see the kids be kids. We know in-person teaching is optimal, but not if that teaching is watered down out of fear. Parents are now watching your every move if they are not paying as much, if they are paying as much attention as before. They are now. The resolution better bring normalcy to our kids. You have the power to make these real changes and not just present us with a non-committal resolution. Parents will surely find out if everything has not been resolved, and they'll remember this, especially if your name is on the ballot in the spring. If you want this bond to pass, you need to put our kids first. The town is disgusted by the way our children are imprisoned and will not even consider supporting the board with these harmful restrictions that are still in place. Of course, we all want improvements to our buildings, but the bond can be revisited in a few months from now, once our kids are treated as they should be. Adults are no longer asked to make sacrifices, and in no way at all should our kids be forced anymore.
Thank you.
Adam Weisman, 260 Garth Road. So what I'd like to know is, is that how often or how much more are the goalposts going to change? If the masks aren't any good, except for the KN95 masks, right? Then why have we been wearing these stupid cloth masks for two years? If these masks, if the cloths masks really don't work at all, they're just garbage, right? That kind of seems just like, oh, follow the science, follow the science. But I don't think it requires a very difficult science to determine whether or not a cloth mask works or it doesn't work. Actually, it was a conspiracy theory when people were saying that cloth masks don't protect you. Probably heard people say that a cloth mask is as good for COVID, is as good as basically sneezing through a chain-linked fence. Has anybody heard of that? Yeah. So people have been talking about KN95 masks are the only ones that work, probably for like over a year. Is that correct? Does anybody know if I'm correct or not? Yep. So why is it now-- So why is it now, when finally, the ghost or the illusion of finally be able, kids being able to breathe free, people being able to breathe free, politicians of parties always breathing free, why is it now that we have to be like, oh, we got to change the goalposts? We should have been wearing, we should be wearing K95 masks, whether they're made in China or United States or wherever? Seems a little ridiculous. I don't know. Maybe that's just me. It seems that at this point, I think most people feel, on both sides, that the mask is really not a mask, but a muzzle. And people that don't want the masks want freedom of choice. If you want to wear your K95 mask, or your astronaut suit, or your quarantine outbreak suit to the supermarket, then you're fine, fine, go for it. You can wear that. No one's saying, "Don't be a crazy lunatic and wear a gas mask if you want to." No one's trying to stop you from doing that, or get triple vaccinated and boosted 10 times if you want to mix and match Moderna and Pfizer, which they said is safe. I don't know if that's true or not. Maybe we'll find out. Seems that every conspiracy theory of yesterday becomes tomorrow's fact. So the people that don't want to wear this stuff are basically saying, hey, you can do what you want. But the people that seem to want these masks seem to want everybody that they disagree with to just shut up. And I think that that's why you see such so many people here tonight. And I think that's why you have people like trying to make these wonderful petitions to get kids to not eat off the floor. So I guess what I'm curious about is, how much more can we expect the goalposts to change? Is it just, is it K95 tomorrow? When will it change? When will it stop? People talk about stats and data. Oh, we need to have a metric of when we can finally go back to normal. Got it. But nobody's been following the science to begin with. So it's a little bit absurd. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're going to do one more speaker after this one.
Okay. This is Cynthia Weisman. That was my son, class of 2000. The CDC finally admitted what many scientists and virologists and epidemiologists have known all along, that surviving COVID provides excellent natural immunity, not only to repeat COVID infection, but to hospitalization and death as well. Read it for yourselves in The Hill today. I took Dr. Glass's advice from last night's meeting and went on the district's COVID dashboard. Of the 452 students who tested positive for COVID since September, 286, or 65%, were just since January 3rd. In Waverly, of the 119 kids who tested since September, 93, or 80%, were just from January 3rd. That is thanks to Omicron. About Omicron, Dr. Geert van den Bosch, a global virology expert who counseled the WHO, said, "The Omicron variant is offering a very nice opportunity for the vaccinated and the unvaccinated, because the Omicron escapes the vaccine and allows your natural immunity to kick in," which is very important in leading us to herd immunity. Dr. Bosch opposes vaccinating children, vaccinating into a pandemic, and creating an Omicron vaccine, which they're working on now, as I understand. If you watch the January 24 hearing conducted by Senator Ron Johnson, you will learn that our public health officials mismanaged the pandemic. It is time they acknowledge their mistakes and set the ship right. Otherwise, they are guilty of crimes against humanity. This is not hyperbole. They suppressed and disparaged effective early treatment. They censored opposing scientists and doctors to create the illusion of scientific consensus. They concealed and dismissed data signaling the vaccines were unsafe. The point is, Governor Hochul and the bureaucrats would like to see more uptake of the vaccine by children. You hear this in every press conference, in every news story. Oh, if we could just get more kids to take the vaccine. Meanwhile, we may have already achieved herd immunity. You don't need 100% coverage to achieve herd immunity. Guidance to elected representatives is coming from bureaucrats in Department of Health, Department of Ed, teachers' unions, who meet and make grand plans without the input of the one constituency most vested in the health and welfare of children, the parents. Enough is enough.
And this is all last speaker, so.
Hi. Diargashi, 127 Garth Road. The New York government is operating under the presumption that vaccinations reduce severity and deaths, and that 85% to 95% hospitalizations and deaths are unvaccinated. Therefore, the unvax, they say, are clogging the hospitals. The following information from Public Health England will prove that both of those claims are false. And unfortunately, since CDC is not as transparent in some of the countries in Europe, we have to rely in a country like England or Scotland to actually go over this data to get a clearer picture as to what's happening. And just for a, just an FYI, US vaccination rate is 64.4%. UK vaccination rate is 72.3%. So it's about 8% higher than the US vaccination rate for New York Times as of yesterday. The reason why I want to bring this up is because of the discrimination of test-to-stay program, which, upon exposure, it discriminates unvaccinated kids and makes them go to test. And it does not require the same thing from a vaccinated person. And this could possibly be used as a justification to discriminate against unvaxxed with the upcoming option to remove masks as well, which is the reason why I want to point this data out. So back to the Public Health England numbers. 4,807 out of 16,294, or around 29.5% in emergency care visits, are unvaxxed. So 70.5% are vaxxed. This is in the last 28 days. So this, by itself, should prove false, the claim that 85% to 95% of hospitalizations are unvaxxed. Going further, the death table shows that 1152 out of 5,482 deaths, or 21%, are unvaxxed. This is in the last 60 days. So 79% of deaths are vaxxed. The fact that the unvaxxed deaths are even lower than the unvaxxed hospitalizations, it also proves false the claim that vaccinations reduce severity and deaths, as one can infer from this that hospitalizations are more severe for the vaxxed than the unvaxxed. Otherwise, you'd expect the unvaxxed death percentage, which is 21%, to be higher than the unvaxxed hospitalizations percentage, which is 29.5% and not lower. Separate data from Public Health Scotland shows that the double-vaxxed COVID death rate is up to twice as high as the unvaxxed death rate. It shows that vaccines seem to add to the severity of COVID deaths, but definitely not reduce it. And this is an adjusted rate per 100,000 population. I want to be clear here. This is not a total number. It's a rate. So vast majority of hospitalization deaths occur among vaxxed and not unvaxxed, as we proved just now. And vaccines do not reduce severity and deaths, as the Scotland data states that. And I also wanted to briefly point out something that one of the speakers said here, which absolutely makes no sense to me, and that is that in CDC was published recently that 66 children, 5- to 11-age group, died with COVID last year from October 3/20 to October 2/21, with a rate of .2 in 100,000, or 1 in 500,000, or 2 in a million. So I don't know, who are these kids that are being hospitalized for a month and a half? But this data does not show that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Excuse me. We only allowed 30 minutes. We have to get to this resolution. If we have time right after we're done with that, you could be the first one to come up and give comments after the board partner meeting, okay? Thank you very much for understanding. Okay. I just want to tell the public that we're now going to discuss this resolution as a board, and I would appreciate everybody being civil. Please don't shout. Please don't, you know. If you agree, disagree, just, this is a meeting held in public, okay? And I just ask you to be civil. Yes? Would you like to say something?
Hey, is it, am I called?
No, not yet. You got to, usually when you start, then it kicks in.
I just wanted to address that there was one comment that was made about possibly waiting a few months on the bond. I totally understand the frustration. Believe me, I want the masks off. I want the social distancing gone. But given the amount of work that's gone into this bond, the lead time with the supply chains, the fact that we have to arrange financing and get contracts, and the fact that we have to do most of this work around a school schedule in the summer, if this bond fails, it's a one-year delay. It's not something we can do in a few months. I just wanted to say that.
Okay. Good point.
We cannot just delay this bond by a few months. If this bond fails next week, it's going to be a one-year delay due to the fact that we have to do work in the summer, and we have to, you know, arrange financing, arrange contracts, and there was a lot of, you know, work that went into scoping the bond. If it fails, it's coming back, it's going to be at least a one-year delay. It's not something we can just put off for a few months.
Okay. So we are up to now business items, so we have a resolution on the table. Jonah, would you like to move the resolution, and then we'll have someone second? Everyone has copies of it. I don't think we have to read it. We save some time, save the time for discussion.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Eastchester Union Free School District adopts the proposed resolution for the district COVID plan and directs the administration to take all actions necessary to implement this commitment.
Okay. Judy, you want to second that?
Does Chrissy want to?
Sure. Chrissy, you want to second it? All right, we're going that way. Good. I didn't have enough to go around the table tonight, that's why. Okay. So now we open it up for discussion, because we have a second. So who would like to? Anybody like to comment first? Just before, before I turn it over to you, just for the edification of the public, the first three paragraphs of this resolution merely restate the school district's mission and its goal for this year, which was to open up as quickly as possible under as normal circumstances as possible. So those three "whereas's" right up front are, they've been on our website all year. They're not new. They've been out there. Everybody's behind them. Everybody's been behind them. So we're really only talking about what comes after that. So, yes, Chrissy, go ahead.
Okay. I first just want to clarify that up until January 14th, schools were required to contact trace and therefore enforce distancing. We're no longer required to contact trace or quarantine based on exposures from school. Right now, New York has a mask mandate. But these distancing guidelines are not a mandate. They're recommendations. And I'd like to comment on why I think that this resolution and changing our back-to-school plan is so important. It's been two years of children distancing, three feet apart or six feet apart, unable to learn, play, or socialize normally. It has been two years of our youngest children being scared to cough, or sneeze, or ask for a tissue, because they know they'll be sent to the nurse or sent home for a COVID test. It has been two years of children not having a normal school experience, not having a normal childhood. Two years of childhoods forever changed. But now, we finally have it within our discretion to change our back-to-school plan, lift the social distancing rules, and give them back some normalcy. We were elected by the parents in this community to represent them and advocate for their children. And of course, we have an obligation to keep students physically safe. And we have focused on that for two years. But we cannot just focus so much on COVID that we lose sight of what's best for students' education and social and emotional well-being. We need to focus on students' education. But how can they get that education if their days are constantly disrupted, leaving their classroom, being sent to the nurse's office because of a stuffy nose, or sent to the hallway to pull down their mask for a second so that they can take a sip of water? We need to focus on their learning. But how can students learn when they're struggling with anxiety and other mental health issues? We have a crisis that is unfolding right before our eyes, the mental health crisis of our children as a result of the restrictions of the past two years. We need to focus on their academics. But social distancing impacts students' ability to learn in a normal environment. Students need to work together with one another, collaborate, cooperate, compromise, problem-solve. Children learn interpersonal skills through play and socialization. Some children are having difficulty making basic peer connections after two years of being told, "Don't get too close to one another. You might get somebody sick." This isn't about politics, and this isn't about personal agendas, and this isn't about picking sides. This is about how strict protocols and social distancing restrictions are negatively affecting students' education and social and emotional well-being. And make no mistake, they are. And yes, of course, we care about the immunocompromised, the grandparents, and the younger siblings. But we have to focus on our student population, and our students have complied with restrictions and mandates for two years in order to protect the vulnerable. And I'd like to offer a personal perspective. My parents are here tonight in support of their grandchildren. They're elderly. They both have underlying health conditions. One is a cancer survivor. They're vaccinated, they're boosted, they wear their masks in public, and they're living their lives, playing cards at their senior center, going on vacation, going out to restaurants with their friends. And the last thing that they want to see is restrictions on their grandchildren for their sake. Any child, any child in our schools whose parents have chosen to have them vaccinated have had the opportunity to do so. Eastchester's numbers are dropping every day, and we currently have a 95.6% vaccination rate. So how can we, in good conscience, tell students to distance from one another for one more day? We cannot wait to see when, if, the guidelines will change. We can do something about it right now. No more distancing. Not in the classrooms, not in the hallways, not at lunch, not at snack, not at gym, not at recess, not outside, and not in after-school clubs. Let's give these kids a pre-COVID school experience and a return to normalcy.
Everybody, please, we want to hear from all the trustees, okay? I understand if you agree with someone, you can show it, but just cut it short, okay? Anybody else want to comment? Yes, no? Anybody? Steve?
So I asked at the last board meeting that we get a presentation from our medical director to understand the risks associated with the different mitigation measures, and if we change them, what type of, you know, how we should do this, right? If we are to change mitigation measures, if, for example, if we were to remove social distancing, what should we think about? How do we, what should we look at? Unfortunately, we did not get that presentation or any information as such prior to this resolution coming before the board. So my question is, because ultimately, this resolution empowers the administration to look at the plan and make changes, I'd like to understand the process and how you will kind of evaluate these things, and will you be getting legal, you know, advice from our legal counsel? Will you be getting advice from our medical director, nurses, and whatnot?
I just want to answer that, and then I'm going to turn it over to Doc. Were you on the call last night? I don't remember. Okay. Last night, we had a forum on changing protocols, and the medical director was on there, and she was asked a question, actually, by Cheryl, and she did address that, but Dr. Glass is, and that call had like about 180 people from the community on it, including, I don't know, four, five, six, four or five board members, but Dr. Glass I don't know, four, five, six, four or five board members, but Dr. Glass, you just want to address his, Steve's concerns here?
The question was asked, and, you know, the medical director has been, has been a good partner in this all along, and had, had indicated that she believed that there was, and I don't want to speak, you know, word for word for her, but the, the indication was there's a continuum, that there's some room to maneuver at this point with the rates as low as they are. And I don't think that we have what we've been asking for, which is some sort of metrics, you know, to guide us. I think those, we continue to ask for them, and not we alone, but many. So I think as we continue to look for those guideposts, we'll use them. We have a reopening committee that we can convene, we have, you know, forums, we have feedback that comes through parent, from parents, through principals, to, to, you know, the administration, we have the medical director, we have, you know, all kinds of avenues, and unfortunately, there's not going to be the kind of super-clear, you know, chart, right, that's going to say, you know, at this level, you know, this is indicated. But what I've tried to do already is to express ranges, you know, because even with the guidelines, if they're asking for six feet at lunch and we can't get six feet at lunch, they're, they're still saying, you know, "Do what you can," right? So the question then becomes, what feedback are we getting from the community that indicates, you know, discomfort with that? And that can be part of it, too. But the medical director has, has indicated a willingness to, to look at the current situation. And then we talked about, you know, if things were to ramp back up, you know, we may have to have the flexibility to, to go the other direction. Right now, they're going in a great trend, they're going in a great direction. So I wish I could give you some more specifics than that, but there aren't a lot of specifics available, and I can't really speak for the medical director.
So from a process perspective, though, you will be taking advice from our medical professionals, and I, so I want to make sure that's clear to everyone in the community that, you know, this isn't necessarily, you know, I made a comment last meeting, you know, none of us went to medical school, and so I don't, you know, and I don't feel we're a board of health, so I don't think we should be making health decision, decisions necessarily, but I think I'm a lot more comfortable with a resolution like this, which empowers you with advice from medical professionals to form a plan to guide us back to normalcy.
Right, thank you. And I just want to also point out that the plan, back from the, the days of Governor Cuomo, when he put all this in place, he said, "The school needs to come up with a plan based on the guidelines to the extent they can in cooperation with their community." And so that he wanted mechanisms in place like the reopening committee that we've had. We haven't convened it, you know, recently, but it's available, and then, of course, our medical director and others. So yes, that's the, that's the spirit that we are supposed to maintain. Thank you.
Jesse, you want to comment next?
Well, I would like to just say ditto to everything.
Sorry.
Can you hear me? Okay. So I definitely have the same sentiments as Chrissy, and I think she said it perfectly. So.
Can't hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. So I know, as I said at one of the last meetings, this is not the same virus from 2020, yet we have not seen as great of a change to the restrictions to account for how much the virus has evolved. Besides arguing about the necessity of the restrictions at this point, we are continuing to send a very strong psychological message for children to fear each other because they could pass deadly germs to each other. So I think at some point, besides only the physical health of children, we need to kind of evaluate really what we're doing to their social, emotional health, development, forming connections, and nurturing the whole child. I think we need to take every step we can to move the kids back toward normalcy, and I think, truthfully, that we should be praying that the past two years' worth of trauma inflicted upon them is reversible at this point. I agree with the term that I think Ms. Weissman used about crimes against humanity. Besides the masking, keeping them at this distance from each other, if there's anything that we can possibly do to change that at this point, I believe is our responsibility. As Chrissy said, any parent that has waited for, you know, the vaccination to be available, and the answer was, you know, "When will people feel safe to ease back into normalcy?" And the answer from a lot of people was, "When the vaccine's available." Well, now they've had their chance to have the vaccine, and they've had that opportunity. So our job is to protect the well-being of the K through 12 children, and obviously, we care about the younger siblings that can't get vaccinated, and obviously, we care about the older, you know, the older and immunocompromised members of your household. But as the Board of Education here, it is our job to protect the K through 12 children and the whole child. The restrictions and changes that started in 2020 were never meant to be permanent, and yet here we are, two years later, with no plan for an exit ramp, and some people in the community feeling like we should proceed with these permanently. And again, it would be your choice if you felt any certain way about distancing or masking, and whether anyone would feel that I have any health experience or not in my years, I don't think you'll find a health expert that's going to say that COVID will ever be eradicated. So it's here to stay, and we need to learn to live with it, and I think that that has to start now.
Anybody else want to say anything? They turn on the mics when we start speaking, so just, that's to keep back feed out. Who wants to speak next?
I don't, okay, I have, well, I have one point. I actually acknowledge some of the feedback we got about the term legally enforceable laws versus applicable laws, and I actually acknowledge, I actually acknowledge that the, the term enforceable laws, legally enforceable laws is questionable, and I actually would like to see that changed to applicable laws, so I would move for, you know, a change to the language, is that something I can do?
Well, we're discussing, you don't have to move anything.
Well, if we're going to vote, then we have to vote in amendment, right?
All I can say on that matter is, that specific phrase was added by our attorney, and I don't know if I would want to change that, because she wrote those consistent with legally enforceable laws. The prior version of this did not include those five words.
It didn't include anything.
Didn't include those five words. She added those five words. So rather than change something, I would suggest that we leave it alone. We could, if we go back to our attorney two days from now and, and she says she's okay with that, I have no problem changing it. It's not going to mean anything, really, you know? Yes, go.
I would, I would agree with that change, all the applicable laws.
No, you gotta, you gotta wait until it kicks in, hang on. Make sure you can hear the echo. Speak.
I believe the applicable law is addressed in the final resolution.
Yeah, in the very bottom, if you want to look at the very last line? You're right, it is in there. Nothing is in any violation of applicable law.
Is this on? Okay. So I, you know, in general, I do think it's addressed, and I typically, you know, in all the contracts that I negotiate, usually I've never seen the term enforceable law versus applicable, but at the same time, being that our attorney put it in, I think we should leave it as, as is.
Because I, I brought it up because I found value in it. To me, legally enforceable laws is awkward and maybe has some unusual inferences, so I, I wanted to make sure.
We can go back and ask if we want to change that after the fact. We can go in our next meeting and modify the resolution if we want to. That's not a big deal. One word is, shouldn't change this. So, I mean, is everybody okay with that? Yes, no, I know you, you'd like to change it now. You okay with that? We'll just go back and ask Stephanie, that's all.
The other, the other comment I'll make, and I, and I expressed this at the last meeting, my, my reservation about this, this resolution is just that it perpetuates a misconception that we hear echoed again from the public tonight, which is that this board has direct control over the mandates that are in front of us today, the mandates that have presented to us before, and the mandates that are going to come down the line. And, and I just need to make sure that the public is aware, and, and that we're all aware, that this, this, this resolution, you know, doesn't change the mandates, it deals with the, with the, what I described as an evolution that, that has become not mandated. And I sort of agree with the speaker, the two speakers, one frankly from, you know, if you want to call it each side of the position here, which is that the, the resolution in some ways brings up as many questions as it does answers, and doesn't really do, you know, doesn't really put anybody in any strong position to do anything except to, to do that which the administration already is doing. So, having said that, last, last meeting when, when Jonah brought up a similar version of the resolution, he, he made clear that he doesn't have the votes to, to move forward with it. We, we seem to have evolved from that, so I'm not, you know, I'm not looking to...
No, he, he brought up a topic, he didn't have a resolution.
Okay, I'm sorry, I brought up a topic, then, I'm sorry. But he, you know, he expressed that he didn't have the votes for it, we've worked out a resolution, and I commend those who worked on it, it was a lot of work, to come up with something that we can all, you know, sort of accept. But I just, I just think that we need to be careful to the precedent, precedent that we're setting here, you know, that, that I think creates sort of a, an optical effect that, that doesn't necessarily have the meaning that we know it, you know, that we know it could have. It doesn't, it creates an optical effect that doesn't have the impact, and it is something that the administration can be doing without resolution from the board. So that's, that's the only comment I'll make.
Specifically told us that he didn't want it to take these steps unless we did a resolution, so that's why we're doing this resolution.
Yeah.
But I think we're also, I mean, I heard this wrong, but I think we're also doing, can you hear me?
No, you gotta wait until they turn it up.
Can you hear me? Yes, okay, great.
The video guys will turn on the mic.
No problem. But, but Judah, I mean, we, we're proposing to do this resolution because to hold the district accountable with three items here, which we are allowed to do, you know, relaxing restrictions, outdoor masking, which we know, I know there was a comment mentioned that, oh, we, we haven't been, you know, mandating outdoor masking with children, but there, there are instances in our school that children are being masked outside. I just want to make that very, very clear, that they are being masked to be, when they're outside, and they don't need to be. So it's, it's points like this that holds us accountable, to make sure that there's consistency across our district in enforcing that masks don't need to be outdoors. And we're also suggesting here, too, is relaxing the lunch protocols that have been taking place, and I guess that's, that's what I'm trying to...
And I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
But we, we actually heard a long time ago from our medical director that masking outside was not necessary, right? So, so, you know...
It was done at assemblies and things because you still had to contact trace when there was an assembly or certain other types of outdoor activities. So that's what we're trying to get rid of now that there's no more contact tracing.
Okay, but, and we also had the situation where we fixed the lunch problem without a resolution, so.
No, it's not fixed, it's not fixed.
It's not fixed.
It's not fixed. The kids are not eating lunch under normal conditions yet. Normal conditions means everybody's in the cafeteria, sitting at the table, seeing their friends' faces, and eating lunch.
They can't see their friends' faces until the mask is on. We know that today.
No, because they're all broken up into different rooms, and in the hall, and in the classroom, and here and there. There's no community.
Well, even, even the fact of relaxing the social distancing, relaxing that, we're humans, right? Just, just as being a human, there's closeness that comes if I sit here or if I sit over here. You build that relationship, even with a mask on, okay, but you can build that closeness of a relationship, just the sheer act of being human.
You gotta wait till it kicks in. Yeah, okay. Like I said, this should have been an administration decision. It's, I guess disappointing to me that it's not, and that it requires resolution.
In all, in all fairness, this is empowering the administration.
Correct.
With the support of the board that represents the community on what to do, okay? We're not ordering them what to do, we're telling them to use all available resources to figure out, to get where we want to go as a community.
Right, but it highlights three specific issues that, that, I just think we're heading down a path where people are going to come with their specific complaints and expect a board resolution to, to direct, you know, an administration change, and I just don't think that's a good thing. That's the bottom line, that's really the bottom line.
Complaints, and we'll see if it fits under this resolution, and we can notify the, the administration about it.
Well, but I think we can notify the administration about any complaint, we do that already.
But it's timeliness, execution and timeliness, that's what we're, that's what we're looking here, and commitment to change.
All right, we're, we're getting near the end of the time allotted, so I want to make sure everybody gets to say something here. Cheryl, you didn't say anything yet?
No, not yet, yeah, I have a few things.
Make sure your mic's going before you say something important.
I can hear it. So I believe that, you know, we're headed in the direction where masks will not be required soon, and we're heading into a new phase, and I look forward to that, I think that that's really positive. Things are changing, and certainly, we have an, you know, a real obligation to represent the families in this district, all the families and students, not just the whole child, but the whole community. And that's what I want to talk about here, because I do think there are some flaws to our process. You know, we know that there are different feelings in here, and I think we need to acknowledge that, that there are, you know, out of 10 people who spoke from the public, five kind of were wanting us to move away from masks and social distancing, and five wanted us to put the brakes on and think about metrics, so we're really in a split situation. As our council has made clear, we do not need BOE or state action to make these changes. And I think there's a reason that the administration makes these determinations. They are regularly in contact with building staff, and they know the conditions in buildings that may complicate or at least need to be taken into consideration as protocols and norms are adjusted. So a board resolution on day-to-day operations in the schools risks sidestepping the informed experience of our building principals and staff, and I want to make sure that there is patience with this process and working with our staff. I am also concerned that our medical director may have been discouraged from attending this meeting, and that she may not have had the opportunity to express her views during the forum last night if I had not directly asked her to. I did ask for her to be invited to attend tonight, and if she couldn't attend, to have her written response to the resolution, which we didn't have. There is no reason not to hear regularly from our medical director when it relates to health and safety decisions, and I certainly don't want to give the impression that we're silencing her expertise. She clearly did express support for two of the changes called for in the resolution, no masks outdoors, we all agree about that, and relaxing restriction on district visitors and events, and I think such relaxation has to be done, as always, under the leadership of building principals and coordination with parent groups and the administration. It's going to be a process, and, and I, I call on everyone for, yes, I know we want this done right away, but for patience, I look forward to their cooperation and mutual support. Our primary goal, as always, is the health, safety, and well-being of our students, and having their parents celebrate with them in special school events, and fostering a healthy parent-school relationship are critical components to parent-student well-being. Dr. Collins did say, as Dr. Glass mentioned, that the relaxation of lunch restrictions is a continuum. This notion supports the superintendent's comments last night, that the administration must create a plan with community interests in mind, that follows the guidelines, and that attends to local and practical constraints. As Dr. Collins acknowledged, we have high levels of immunity right now, and that is one of our local sort of constraints, working with the, the desire to have less, more normal lunch, for instance, and less social distancing, so that's great. The resolution doesn't mention guidelines, but they do still exist, and I don't think they should be sort of simply struck down because they're no longer required. We are asked, we have parent members and community members who are asking us to answer to them, so I do want to know what is the timeline for implementing these changes? We do need to, as our lawyer said, provide adequate notice that the reopening plan is being modified, so that parents have a chance to talk with their children, teachers have a chance to prepare, everyone has the opportunity to make this a smooth transition where we don't have the tensions and discord that can occur, as we know, when we roll these things out overnight. And I'd like to know how community members' needs and preferences will be addressed, leading out to the rollout of changes. I just want to make sure that we are empathetic as a community, and that we make sure all families' health concerns are taken seriously. We have heard this week, during the Tuesday forum, tonight, in email messages this week, our families express a range of concerns and preferences, and even our students, and I'm sure none of us, you know, want any families to feel alienated or ostracized, to leave the district, just because they want different options. So I hope that we can all work together. It has been a hell of a couple of years. I think that the range of feeling and emotion is cared for. I, I hear you, I'm not sure it's represented in this resolution, which is disappointing. I sincerely hope that we... I sincerely hope that we can use our platform to unite rather than divide, and heal some of the division from the last couple of years. It really has wrought quite a bit of division in our lives, and it's very difficult for our children as well. I would like to be able to model for our children kindness, empathy, listening to our neighbor, more than live with COVID. We need to learn how to live with each other. I believe we all value our neighbors and our community, and that is why we're here in this room together. And I hope that in the coming months, we can elevate this value to foster the caring environment we all want for our kids.
Thank you, Cheryl. Hey.
Thanks.
Really? Come on.
Thank you. That was, was what I was talking about.
All right. I'll throw my two, my two cents, and I'm gonna keep it very short. Yes, I'm sorry.
Glass?
Yeah, I'll go. Go ahead. I'm sorry, I thought you commented already.
Just, just a quick thing. So this resolution, obviously, is just kind of words on, on paper at this point. We can't be there to police this and make sure that, you know, all, all of these things are getting carried out. So I would encourage everybody to talk with your kids, and, you know, ask them if there's still kind of social distancing or other protocols that are going on. And to the extent that any of those protocols are having any adverse impact on their education, whether mental health, or their physical, social, or emotional wellness, bring it up with the principals. And if it's not remedied, bring it up with Dr. Glass. And if it's still not remedied, bring it up with us, because those protocols are to be modified or eliminated promptly. So we need you as our eyes and ears, and we're gonna get this, we're gonna get this all worked out. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Jonah. I, I just want to add just the last, last word, and then I'm gonna flip it over to Dr. Glass. But this took a lot of work to, to develop this. People wanted more specifics in it, less specifics in it. We crafted something that we felt was pretty representative of what we believe everyone can live with, which is basically providing the support that the administrative team in this district needs to get where we're all trying to go, okay? Which is back to normal. We said that in September. We haven't changed from that. People seem to have very strong positions on how to get back to normal, or how fast to get back to normal, but we all want the same thing. And that's what we're trying to do here. This is, we're not calling for specific metrics. I think Jackie might have been the one who said, and I've said this in the past, today, we're looking at a disease that's, or a virus that's completely different than the one a year, two years ago, when this whole started, when this whole stuff started. And that you could set metrics, and those metrics might not apply for the next one, because we all know there's a next one coming. Okay? That's a fact. You can take that to the bank, okay? It's going to happen. And it's how we deal with it, and we think that this is empowering the district with all of the resources that they have available to them, to make the best decisions and recommendations for our kids, our students, and our community. Okay? So I want to flip it over to Dr. Glass and ask him just to comment maybe a little bit about last night, and what this means to you as far as what you're gonna be doing. And then, like I said, we have to stop at 7:30.
Yes, thank you. I'm not gonna take a lot of time. You've all spoken very eloquently and made excellent points. I do want to say that while typically, you know, one of the themes that was, that came up was that, you know, this may not have been necessary under normal circumstances to have a resolution when board action isn't required, and I appreciate the attention to the precedent, your thoughtfulness about that. But I did ask for this resolution in these conditions. We are in an extraordinary circumstance in which we are caught between many competing interests, and to discern the community's, you know, true preference is very important right now, and is very difficult to discern. And as the elected trustees of the Board of Education, to venture into a particular direction and have your, your direction as, as the trustees, be able to say, this is the direction we believe that the community wants you to move in, does empower me when I get into some waters, right, that may come at, cross, be a little crosswise, to perhaps guidelines that lag a little bit, right? That are, you know, bureaucratic in nature and don't recognize what's happening on the ground in a community. So to be able to have that directionality and have your assurance to move in a particular direction, and all I would ask then is for your understanding for some of the logistics and some of the working out, as was brought up by several of you, that this will take a little bit of time, and the communication and the consistency is gonna take time. All of those things are important. And, but I do want to thank you, because I've observed this board, under Vito's leadership as president, really working with all of you, trying to meet the requests that I made of you, trying to meet everything that you understand in this community, come up with a resolution that gave the directionality, and yet gave a latitude that's necessary. That's important. And I know that you all compromised a great deal to, to get to this point, and that is modeling, I think, what, what we need right now. I'll leave it at that, and I want to thank you very much.
All right, if there's no more discussion on this, I'm gonna close the discussion, and I'm gonna call for a vote on the resolution as it's written. All in favor? Okay, yes? No? Okay. Opposed? Or abstained? One abstention. Okay. Seven, zero, one. All righty? Thank you, everybody. We have about seven minutes left, and I'd like to open it up to the two people that I asked politely to let us get to our meeting, because we now have time for you both. Whoever was, I don't know who was lined up, but we only have time for two people. That's the... Yeah, fine, we could do three if you could keep it just a tiny bit short. Okay? Wait till you, you get the sound. Go ahead, speak.
Did the vote go through?
Close it.
It did. Okay, so I just want to say thank you. Thank you to the board. Thank you, Kristi Geig, for all you, that you did for us this last week, and getting this approved and, and going through. I hope to see that, you know, the cafeteria and all the, you know, parents are back in buildings, kids don't need to do this whole thing of sitting in the hallways, all these things are reduced, and we go back to normal. So, but I want to thank the board.
I also want to thank you for all your hard work, Dr. Glass, the board. I know this has been a terrible situation across the board for everybody since the beginning of this. But if we just take a step back and look at what we're talking about and considering and planning on, if we take a step back, do we realize that this isn't even a thing in multiple states in the country? This is just in New York. This is just in New Jersey. It's not in Florida. There's other places across the country that this isn't even an issue. So I think it's important that we get back to normal, like we are supposed to. Mask choice, wear your mask when you're there. Obviously, the usual cast of characters doesn't want to go back to school full-time. They didn't want to go back to school two days a week. Everything, there's always an issue, but we need to get back. And I thank you for your time, and I really hope that we can make our kids go back to school without masks. Thank you.
I'm a surgeon who primarily deals with colon cancer patients. And in the last month, I had to cancel and delay 12 patients for their surgery. The reason I say this is because five of them, they, was because of COVID reasons. And all five of them got it from their kids. They were unvaccinated, and so their course was delayed, their treatment's been delayed, and that had, that has long-term ramifications. My point is, decisions made here have downstream effects, not only with the children here, but for the community as a whole. I've been, I spent most of 2020 dealing with COVID patients, treating COVID patients. COVID is tricky, and it's tough. Masks are just one part of the layer of protections. It includes ventilation, it includes vaccination, it includes social distancing. These are all proven factors that we know work. So, is in that vein, I ask, I echo Dr. Smith's remarks, that nobody wants, everybody wants to go back to normal. I want to go back to normal. I, I don't, I, I'm tired of treating COVID patients. I, I'm just tired of it. But if these guidelines are to be changed, or to be loosened, they're, they'd be, they'd be, that they be done so under the guidance and under the expertise of healthcare professionals to help in that process, so we do that in a safe and responsible way. Thank you very much.
Got one more?
Yeah. I'll, I'll be really, really quick. First of all, thank you for calling this meeting. Chris Johnson, 14And3. Board, thank you for calling this meeting today and moving this downrange, but we can do a lot, lot better. Everyone here knows the elephant in the room is that the gig is up. All right, listen, we, everyone here has been to a restaurant, right? We sit down, we take our masks off, and we eat. But our kids are at the end of the chow line, right? Their last. That's completely disgusting. We are doing massive damage to these children, long-lasting damage. You can't get it back, and that's our fault, the adults, because we let this happen. Next point, I don't want to hear medical professionals said this, medical professionals said that. If they have an opinion, they need to provide data that's scientifically proven, peer-reviewed, and show us how they came about their opinion based on that data. Lastly, one thing I have learned through this process is, these are not public schools. These are government-run schools by the, by the Department of Health, Department of Education, the government, the unions, and the parents don't have any input. Completely unsat. Meanwhile, the parents have to pick up the bill. And now you're asking us to vote for a bond to give you more money? Stand up for the kids!
7:30, we're done. Okay? Second, all in favor? All right. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for your comments.